Hello, everybody. My name is Reed Sternberg. I'm with the Texas Green Network and the Shades of Green Radio Show. And I'd like to thank everybody for joining us tonight for this Travis County Candidate Forum. We're focused specifically on environmental and sustainability issues tonight. And so while our candidates have been participating in a variety of forums recently, we would like to ask you to do your best to keep our focus for tonight in mind. I know there's temptation to answer all kinds of things when you're given a minute or two. We'd like to thank the Vortex Theater and the Butterfly Bar for their kind support in hosting this event. And as a side note, I'd also like to mention that the Vortex is currently having a fundraiser called "Vortex Illuminate" to raise dollars to get a new lighting grid, and they are a nonprofit. And so if anyone's interested, you can get information about contributing to that at www.vortex.org. But thank you so much to both the Vortex Theater and the Butterfly Bar as well. And also thanks to my father, Rick Sternberg, and AIM Productions for taping this for rebroadcast as well. Tonight's forum was produced by Texas Green Network and has also been made possible by support from Austin Eco Network, the SEED Coalition, and Save Barton Creek Association. Travis County is unique in Texas as an area with a huge environmental consciousness. And so we do tend to expect a certain baseline awareness in our candidates. And so we're looking for more than the obvious tonight and looking for distinctions between our candidates' point of view. This evening, we're joined by county commissioner candidates Bridget Shea, Gary Brown, and Richard Jung. And we're going to open with a two-minute opener and also have a two-minute closing for each candidate. And Mr. Roy Whaley here will be watching them carefully on that. And we'll have one minute each to answer each question. So the questions have been generated by -- they've been contributed by nine area environmental organizations, and we'll acknowledge which organization has provided each question as we go. So with no further ado, I'm going to go ahead and start the first -- well, actually, no, we're going to start with introductions. So Gary, why don't you go ahead and do your two-minute introduction first, and then we'll rotate from there.
Sure. My name is Gary Brown, and I'm running for Travis County Commissioner, Precinct 2. My professional career has always been about people, whether I was a preschool teacher for 12 years or writing a senior fraud prevention program that was just unveiled by Constable Sally Hernandez just recently. It's also been at the center of my campaign, where we have gone out and volunteered with nonprofit organizations here in Travis County, such as the Sierra Club, and Keep Austin Beautiful, and Austin Pets Alive, and Kevall Area Food Bank. We have also partnered with community organizations, such as the North Onset Pacific Association, where I will be tomorrow morning helping them to pick up trash off major streets in their neighborhoods. I've also put together school supplies with the Jewish and Hindu communities. I am the only person in this race that has commissioner's court and county government experience. I have firsthand knowledge of how it all works. With such huge issues, such as transportation, and water, and wildfires, and taxes, I've worked on them all. I don't think that we can afford the luxury of hiring someone who needs months of on-the-job training, especially with 70 to 150 people a day moving here. I know how it all works. Thank you all very much for having us here. I look forward to the questions, and I hope to have your support.
Thank you. And Richard?
I'm waiting for the dictatorial timekeeper. Are we ready? Okay, here we go. My name's Richard Jung, and I'm also running for Travis County Commissioner, Precinct 2. To tell you a little bit about myself, I'm a first-generation immigrant to this country. My parents and my sister and I moved here when I was eight years old. When we first got here, my mom sewed peace goods and my dad fixed transistor radios, eventually saved up enough money to start their own small business. And I've been working in those businesses since I was the age of eight until my dad's health failure prevented him from continuing. In an environmental vein, the last business that my parents had was the dry cleaners. And for many, many years, my dad worked actually cleaning the clothes with perchloroethylene, I think, Perk. Eventually, he actually passed away from lung cancer, and in large measure, that was due to the impact that the perk had on his lungs. And so I understand dramatically the impacts that a failure to protect our populace from, you know, hazardous chemicals, the importance of having clean air and clear water. Another aspect, though, that I'm very focused on, which I appreciate the Green Network about, is trying to build bridges between the business community and the environmental community to produce jobs, particularly blue-collar jobs. I'm very focused on the very high rate of poverty in Austin and Travis County during the biggest boom period that we're supposed to have ever experienced. Our working-class and middle-class families are shrinking. I think it's very, very important. We have numerous environmental organizations. And I think particularly the Sierra Club, I want to give credit to because in their questionnaire, they address this issue. And I think more people need to be aware of it, and I hope you'll support me for candidacy. Thank you very much.
All right. And Bridget?
Hi. My name is Bridget Shea, and I am running for Precinct 2 Travis County Commission. I believe we need strong, experienced leadership on the Travis County Commission, and I want to bring my experience from the Austin City Council and my 25-year record of leadership in the environmental community to the county. We are facing a water crisis, and we really don't have anyone in our community who I can easily identify as an absolute champion for water conservation and water reuse. I want to bring that experience to the commissioner's court, and there are many, many things that can be done, and I hope we'll have a chance to talk about that in greater detail. I actually came to Texas in 1988 to start the state chapter of Clean Water Action in response to the testimony of Dr. James Hansen, who at the time was the head of the Goddard Space Institute at NASA and had testified to Congress about climate change. And it changed my life. I literally dropped what I was doing and came to Texas to work on this issue. And I have been very privileged to work on a great many aspects related to this. We advised Governor Richards, Dan Morales, the then-land commissioner Gary Morrow on environmental issues. I served on the Austin City Council for three years and was a champion for many environmental initiatives. I had the privilege to head up SOS. It was our -- it is our community's David and Goliath story. We, as the citizens of Austin, literally defeated the man who owned the world's largest gold mine. And I'm convinced it's the reason we can still swim in Barton Springs 21 years later. It's also been a real boon for our economy. Many people come here because it is a beautiful place to live, because we had the wisdom as citizens to protect our quality of life. Houston and Dallas don't have those bragging rights. So anyway, I've been a champion for the environment. I want to continue that leadership on the commissioner's court, and I'd be honored to have your support and consideration. I look forward to your questions. Thank you so much.
Okay. Well, thank you all. So the questions, as I mentioned, were contributed by various environmental organizations in the area. And in most questions, you'll kind of have an idea of who, you know, that they relate to the organization's focus. But the first one's a fairly general question, contributed by Austin Eco Network. And the question is, and this will start with Richard this time, "Decisions in many areas of Travis County governance can have unexpected environmental impact. What method of vetting ideas for their environmental soundness do or will you employ as a county commissioner?"
Well, I hope to, as with a lot of other issues, have regular communications with different advocacy communities in Travis County. I've already advanced the idea of a student liaison who would tell me about student issues. And I think we should have a regular environmental liaison, labor liaison. The county commissioner's office should be open to all groups and all citizens and try to communicate these issues. Vetting them, I think, would be relatively easy because of the number of strong environmental organizations here in Austin, Travis County. And I would be open to listening to any and all groups about their input about whatever the issue may be.
All right. And Bridget?
And the question is how --
Yeah, I can say it again. "Decisions in many areas of Travis County governance can have unexpected environmental impact. What method of vetting ideas for their environmental soundness do or would you employ as a county commissioner?"
Well, I would continue my lengthy and extensive communications and outreach with environmental organizations. With SOS, we actually did this. We convened all of the environmental organizations, including Earth First, which I don't think is quite as active in the community these days, and staff at state regulatory agencies. And we spent months literally hashing through what should be in the SOS ordinance, and then finally voted on it as a community. So it was a super-democratic process. And I would continue that. There's a particular model that Brandy has employed at the Eco Network that I think is really ingenious of literally pooling people together and looking at almost a campaign model, how to elect an environmental idea, and really hashing it out with people from many, many different backgrounds. And I think that's a very effective model and would look to use that as well.
Great. And Gary?
As I've been saying throughout this campaign, I will meet anyone, anywhere, at any time. I will take that into the Precinct 2 office and have an open-door policy for anyone who wants to talk to me about these particular issues, you know, and specifically environmental issues, you know, working with Keep Austin Beautiful and the Sierra Club and all of the rest. I mean, I'm with you all on these issues. And obviously, there's people who have more experience on these issues than others in this race. But, you know, when I'm commissioner, I will always ask Bridget Shea what her opinion is.
And I'll always give it.
You know, I worked for Commissioner Karen Huber. So especially on water issues, I mean, she really pushed the envelope, and I really want to be in that same vein.
Okay. So the next question is going to start with Bridget, and this one does come from the Sierra Club, of all people. This is a transportation question. "TexDOT is preparing an EIS for proposed changes to Highway 290 at the Y and Oak Hill. Would you support including a non-told, non-elevated parkway alternative in the EIS? And what are your environmental metrics for evaluating proposed transportation solutions such as at the Y?"
I will absolutely push for a non-told option. It's my understanding that right now, that is not included. And I think it's just profoundly unfair for the citizens for evaluations to only include either told or nothing. So I will push for a non-told option. And the environmental metrics, to me, have to look at not just the impact of the construction of the road, but the impact beyond that regarding what kind of development that road will allow. That's one of the issues with SH-45 that I think has not been included or discussed sufficiently. There is a great deal of development that will become possible because of the construction of SH-45 that would happen over the aquifer. So that's a key metric and probably one of the most important ones, and also the environmental design of any kind of a roadway.
Okay. And Gary? Do you want the question again, or --
Please.
Okay. "TexDOT is preparing an EIS for proposed changes to Highway 290 at the Y and Oak Hill. Would you support including a non-told, non-elevated parkway alternative in the EIS? And what are your environmental metrics for evaluating proposed transportation solutions such as at the Y?"
An EIS done by TexDOT is immediately suspect, in my opinion. You know, I mean, they really are about roads, and maybe that's what they really should be about. But, you know, I mean, they're also doing the EIS for State Highway 45 Southwest, and frankly, it's dead-on rival, as far as I'm concerned. So there should be a non-told option. Bridget's right. You can't have one or the other without, you know, this told option. You know, the Fix 290 folks down in Oak Hill have been working on this seemingly forever. And they do not want an elevated highway, and I can't blame them. There's got to be, you know, some option that we can put, that they could put forward that everybody can be semi-happy with.
Okay. And Richard? Do you want me to pose it again? Okay, absolutely. "TexDOT is preparing an EIS for proposed changes to Highway 290 at the Y and Oak Hill. Would you support including a non-told, non-elevated parkway alternative to the EIS? And what are your environmental metrics for evaluating proposed transportation solutions such as at the Y?"
So if I've understood the question correctly, yes, I would support a non-told, non-elevated option. Obviously, toll roads are a little bit discriminatory, and I don't want Austin and Travis County to look more and more like Houston or Dallas. I'm not fully educated on the issue, and I'd love to examine it more, but that would be my initial reaction. And as far as what are going to be the metrics, again, I think many of the metrics that were developed by SOS to protect many sensitive areas of Austin. We have, I think, good rules that we can use in different situations. And again, I would just have to look at the context and try to figure that out.
Okay. So the next question, we'll start with Gary. This question was provided by the Sustainable Food Center, and the question is obviously about food and local farming in this case. "Local farming has been credited as a positive contributor to our culture, our environment, and our economy. What next steps would you support to help local organic farmers, especially in urban areas?"
Well, I would like to -- Commissioner's Court does provide some people to the Sustainable Food Policy Board. And I would really want to make sure that I'm appointing someone, first of all, who is well-versed in these issues. I'd like to work with my friend Eddie Rodriguez, who has started the Farm-to-Table Caucus, and work with him on these kind of issues. And, you know, this is one issue that I'm not well-versed in. So the people that I would talk to would have to be people who actually know what's going on there, and I think Eddie is one of them, so.
Okay. And then Richard?
One more time, please.
Yes? "Local farming has been credited as a positive contributor to our culture, our environment, and our economy. What next steps would you support to help local organic farmers, especially in urban areas?"
Well, I'm not really sure what the county per se could do. There are a lot of zoning issues within the city, I know. Paige Hill, who recently got married, Paige Hill Olivera, has endorsed my campaign, and she's one of the founding people in the urban farming movement. You know, Paige has always emphasized to me that it has to be in conjunction with a lot of environmental measures, that, you know, intensive watering can be a problem, obviously, during a water shortage. And so, you know, using rainwater, a lot of different methods to try and make sure that we do urban farming in an environmentally sensitive way. And I think all of that's very important. Whatever the county could do, I would like to see done, but I'm not sure that there are a whole lot of areas we can have direct impact on that.
Okay. And Bridget, do you want me to state it again, the question?
It's basically what can the county do to help and support sustainable --
Supporting local and urban or organic farming, yes.
You ready, Roy? Basically, I would go directly to Rhonda Rutledge and folks with the Sustainable Food Center to ask them, what do you need from the county? What can we do to be helpful? But to me, this is a really important education issue in the community, and I was really, I was very sad to see the divisiveness around the location of the urban farms that went before the council recently. And it's not clear to me how those zoning changes might affect local urban farms. So I'd certainly want to start with that community to find out what can the county do to be helpful. I think to the extent that the county can provide assistance with infrastructure, locations for markets, education about why local food is so crucial, not just because it's close to home, it's healthy, but it provides us with food security. And increasingly, when tainted food is showing up in the food supply, people are now starting to understand that issue.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So the next question is regarding zero waste. It's contributed by the Central Texas Zero Waste Alliance. And we will start with Richard on this one. "Just recently, Travis County and the city of Austin signed an interlocal agreement to regionalize parts of Austin's Zero Waste Plan. From the perspective of a county commissioner, what initiatives do you believe would be appropriate with the city and surrounding jurisdictions to fully regionalize zero waste plan?"
Well, I'm going to have to plead some ignorance on this issue, but I think the county, what could the county do, or what could the county commissioner's court do? I think to regionalize it, it would work through other regional entities like CAPCOG and try to see what we can do to convince other counties, who may be a little bit more conservative than we are, about the benefits of going zero waste, and see what we can do to build relationships. You know, we've already started building good relationships in terms of many transportation issues, to get people in the outlying counties to see that we all are in the same boat, and we all suffer from the same problems, and we all have the same future together. So my first step would be to go to the different county commissioners' courts and see what we could do.
Okay. And Bridget?
Well, this is an issue that I have a long history on. I will be very clear that I will not support expansions of local landfills, and I have worked extensively with community members to fight that. And it's still a mystery to me as to why some of those expansions of local landfills have gone through. Zero waste, to me, is both important for the environment, and I think there are many business opportunities associated with it as well. And I want to acknowledge the Bar Mansion for being, I think, one of the first zero-waste events facilities in the community. But this, to me, is where the role of a county commissioner can be as creative and powerful as the person in that position. Yes, we're limited by state law as to what we legally have the right to do, but we can use the bully pulpit to educate people about the importance of issues. Like I said earlier, to be a champion for water conservation, we can do the same thing to be a champion with eliminating waste.
Okay. And Gary?
Well, I hate to trumpet what both my opponents have been saying, but yes, you know, we can bring in, you know, organizations that already work with our region, like CAPCOG, or even further out, the Conference of Urban Counties, or even the Texas Association of Counties. There are already mechanisms in place that even CAMPO. We could really work within those groups. The Precinct 2 office is on CAMPO, and hopefully, the Precinct 2 office will be part of CAPCOG. Right now, it's Precinct 3. But I just think that there are some opportunities there that aren't being fully used. And I think that, you know, in a setting like that, would be some of the best ways to start talking about zero waste.
Okay. All right. Moving on to the next question, we'll start this one with Bridget. And this question has been provided to us by PODER, People Organizing Defense of Earth and Her Resources, regarding flood preparedness. What will Travis County do to protect residents from future floods? And what is it doing to aid flood victims and natural resources such as Richard Moya Park? Or what will it do? That's probably the appropriate question for all three of you.
Well, actually, I was pleased to help out with the flood victims at the time and actually housed someone whose choice was to live in her car with all her wet, mildewy clothing. And I just recently worked with another resident down there to make sure that the city did not cut off electricity for many of the people who were still suffering from the flood. And I also feel like the priorities at the county need to change. The same week the county was telling the residents, "We don't have enough money to help you," they also were rushing to approve $16.6 million for a new driveway for Formula One. I opposed that. I spoke out against it at the time, and I continue to think that that's truly misplaced priorities at the county. I am working, and this is one of the reasons I'm running, actually, on getting, going after federal money to create the best community preparedness initiative in the nation, because we have to prepare our citizens for floods, for wildfires, for drought, for every extreme of weather. Thank you.
Okay. And Gary?
I was, about a week after the floods happened, I went down to Dove Springs to volunteer. And I have to tell you, you know, having grown up in southern Louisiana and seen quite a lot of floods, it was a bit overwhelming to me. And I was told it was much better then than it was even three days before that. You know, actually, here in Austin and Travis County, we have seen what can happen after a major flood, the Memorial Day floods, '25, 1981, I think, before I got here. You know, I think we need to go back and look and see what actions were taken, because those floods haven't happened again down in, on South Lamar, or on Lamar and Eighth and Ninth and Tenth, that whole area. Let's go back and look and see what happened back then and what happened afterwards, and let's see if we can use some of those lessons today to fix, you know, this area down in southeast Travis County.
Okay. And Richard?
So there are a couple of maybe potentially conflicting issues here. Number one, I would obviously like to see flood prevention measures that don't cause damage, further damage to the environment. I mean, you can do levees and dikes and all sorts of things that I think can be counterproductive. A lot of that area is just going to be a flood zone, and we need to accelerate the buyout and make sure that people, if they're going to go down there, they should have their own flood insurance and be fully aware of the risk that they're taking. And that goes to a lot of the renters as well. I was down there with Gary and after, and a lot of the homeowners, a lot of the people living there are actually renters. And so they unknowingly rented homes and lost all of their property without knowing it was a flood zone. So again, I'd like to make sure that we don't do further damage with flood protection measures and that we, in a known flood zone, we buy people out and leave it pristine land if we can.
Okay. So the next question, we are going to start with Gary. This question was provided by Environment Texas, and it's on the lovely topic of fracking. "In November, two drilling companies signed an agreement to frac 12 wells immediately east of Travis County in Lee and Bastrop Counties in 2014. Due to loopholes in federal law, fracking is exempt from our nation's cornerstone environmental laws, raising fears of drinking water contamination and air pollution. How will you use your position at Travis County to advocate for stronger state and federal standards to protect Travis County from the effects of fracking?"
Well, I would believe that my first meeting after with the environmental groups would be with Congressman Doggett, because he's, you know, always been a champion on environmental issues. And then, you know, work with our Travis County delegation down at the Capitol. It's, you know, when the Railroad Commission and the Railroad Commissioners candidates are not listening to the people up in North Texas, where this has really been a problem, it's a major problem, and we need to fight against that and bring as many people as we can into the fight with us and, you know, lead those counties over to the east. That's, I wasn't aware of that, and that's a problem. So, you know, I don't think enough study has been done on fracking and the results of all of that. And hopefully, we can get the EPA and some other feds to work on that.
Okay. Richard?
I'd like to say frac-fracking. You know, unfortunately, I really wish, and I think anyone who runs for county commissioner's court or is an office holder in the county commissioner's court wishes that we had more powers and the ability to influence so many issues that are really not going well in the state under a Republican legislature. We don't have those powers, but as Bridget has mentioned many times, I think, as an office holder, you have the right to use the bully pulpit to advocate for issues that you think are very important to you and the people of the county and of the state. And I'd be happy to lend my name and my presence to any efforts to make sure that we don't cause serious harm to groundwater and to other long-term hazards, creating long-term hazards through the fracking frenzy that's going on right now.
All right. And Bridget?
I am on the National Board of Clean Water Action, and it is a major priority for -- I am on the National Board of Clean Water Action, and it is a major priority for that national environmental organization. So, I'd look to whatever practices are taking place in states around the country that are grappling with this issue, to see if any can apply here. But Gary is right. The Railroad Commission has turned a deaf ear on many environmental concerns for years. I know, because I've been part of the environmental community, trying to get them to change laws or strengthen laws. So, I will be looking to see what kinds of things we can be creative about. I am in conversations with the county attorney, David Eskamia, who's supporting me, to look at where we can push the envelope on the limited powers that the county has. The county has some authority over septics for groundwater. So, I think really where the most play would happen on this is that bully pulpit and working with the state legislative delegation and the surrounding communities that are affected by this.
Okay. For the next question, we're going to be turning to Climate Change Now Initiative. And we're going to be talking about drought on this one. We're going to start with Richard for this question. It is clear that our area is facing a drier future with more extreme weather events. As a Travis County Commissioner, how will you lead the county in addressing the impact?
I think, number one, I mean, we need to have a broader view of the impact of climate change. And that doesn't just mean water. Obviously, we need more water conservation measures, and we need to ensure a water supply. I mean, my mom is out in California and many parts of California. They're actually shutting off water supplies to communities, and they're going to have to truck water in, as is happening in West Texas now, too, because of the drought. But we need to look at a broader view. It's the case that even in transportation measures, we can build in factors to help make sure that we don't aggravate drought conditions, that we are able to do more to make sure that we don't exacerbate the conditions that exist now because of climate change. And I would just like to broaden our policies, look at other states that have done actually climate change initiatives, and follow along with a lot of those initiatives as well. Thank you, sorry.
Okay. And Bridget?
And the question really is sort of what can be done to conserve water?
Yeah, I can read it again. It's clear that our area is facing a drier future with more extreme weather events. As a Travis County Commissioner, how will you lead the county in addressing the impact?
Again, this is one of those bully pulpit issues. You won't, if there was a job description for the county commissioner's position, you would not find a bullet that says, "Protect our water resources." But we desperately need our leaders to do that. There are so many things that can be done that are not being done. And this is where I would sort of shine a spotlight on them. I've given these examples in many forums, but they're worth repeating. The University of Texas uses over 400 million gallons of drinking water every year to air condition their buildings. They have a central chilled water plant. I know the engineer who worked on this, and it took him 25 years to get the city to run a reuse line to one of those plants. And they just cut the ribbon on it last March. So, we really should be calling attention to these kinds of things. The city has a chilled water loop in the downtown that's used to air condition the high-rises. That uses drinking water. The University of Texas wants to convert from drinking water on its lawns. They use 65 million gallons, and the city's policies have been a barrier. So, the bully pulpit's the best.
Okay. And Gary?
Well, I think that there are some things that I would like for the county to look into. One of them being, can we incentivize builders to build neighborhoods where all the houses have rain collection systems, where every yard has zirescaping? We need to really encourage the city to fix its leaking pipes underneath the city. Now, there was a story late last year where, you know, the city was ballyhooed for cutting by 25% the water that's, you know, coming from these leaking pipes. Well, it went from four billion laws to three billion laws. That's still a problem. So, really, Travis County has got to keep an eye on the LCRA and TCEQ and what they're doing to make sure they keep high the quality and the quantity of our water here.
Okay, thank you. I think we're going to have time for one more question before we go to our closing statements. The next one has been provided by Design Build Live, and is regarding recycling, composting, and gray water use. And we are going to start with Bridget on this one. Give a specific example of a creative measure you would support to encourage rainwater harvesting, recycling, composting, or gray water use.
Well, as somebody who's been composting for about 20 years now, with my chicken coop, I've told people that I think this is one of those kinds of local solutions that can be encouraged. I don't know that the county would have to incentivize it, but it's part of that broader education initiative. We put all our food scraps out in the chicken coop. The chickens eat it. They make wonderful fertilized compost for our garden. We get fresh eggs every day, and we have a great garden as a result. So, there's wonderful examples on site that can be done. And this is not heavy lifting. It's one of the easiest things to do. There, the city has made enormous strides with recycling. And it happened because the citizens fought to oppose a garbage burner. That's how we got recycling. And some of those folks who fought it are in this room. So, citizen leadership has had a profound impact. And I will look to the citizens for more initiatives that the county can undertake, again, using that bully pulpit.
Okay. Gary, do you want the question again?
No, it's okay. It's sort of like conservation, and we all talk about conservation, how important it is. This is also important. And I think a major factor in increasing that is public education. And there needs to be some effective public education on this, as it is with conservation. And there needs to be some bold leadership to, you know, lead in this deal. So, Bridget's right, as usual. On this particular issue, you know, I love Bridget. So, she's not right on everything, but she's right on some of this. So, you know, public education is going to have to be, you know, very important. And I think we're going to, the county's going to have to look to the folks who have worked on this issue for a while, because I can tell you, there's been nobody at the county working on this. So, you know, there's no expertise there. So, that's what I believe.
And Richard?
So, I think that the county should definitely incentivize a number of different measures, primarily around water conservation. You know, what is amazing to me right now is that we have all watched Lake Travis drop as far as it has, and seen the lack of water that we have. We have not initiated any publicity campaigns about start, stop, showering, how we flush our, like, there are so many conservation measures that are not very difficult. We've educated people on recycling, and they've taken to it. We can do the same thing for water conservation measures. I would incentivize builders, homeowners, to put in reused recycled water lines, do rain markets, anything that we can to conserve water, because it is critical at this point. It's not something that we can just continue to watch go by. And we have for quite a number of years. And it's surprising, given the focus of our environmental community here in Austin and Travis County.
Okay. And so, now, we've got a few minutes left. We've got enough time for our closing statements. We're going to want a little bit more time, two minutes per. And for this one, we are going to start with Gary.
I started at the beginning.
I know. It's all a rotation. I'm sorry.
It's okay. I really appreciate everyone being here tonight. One of the things that I mentioned a little bit earlier is that we really need to keep an eye on the LCRA and the TCEQ. The LCRA is bringing in a brand-new executive director, and this guy is a former deputy chief of staff to Rick Perry, and former executive director over at Tech dot. I have zero confidence in this guy, and he hasn't even started yet. You know, since my former boss, Karen Huber, left office, no one on Commissioners' Court has been keeping an eye on what's, the hijinks, you know, may be happening down there. There's been some crazy ideas over the past four or five years. There was a developer who wanted to put floating habitable condos on the lake. And when I say on the lake, I'm talking really on the water. Well, Karen and I together wrote a resolution opposing that measure and passing it through Commissioners' Court. Then we sent it out to our stakeholder group and collaborators in the Highland Lakes and around Lake Travis. And they all passed it to, and we all went down to LCRA and the TCEQ and defeated that. There was a proposed power plant, White Stallion, that was going to be built down at Matagorda Bay, that was going to have to use a whole lot of water from the Highland Lakes. We did the same thing, spoke with one voice, and defeated that measure. I want to be in the same thing. I am working to be that. I would love to have your support. And thank you all for being here.
Thank you. And Richard?
Thank you for having us. And, you know, as I mentioned in my opening, I think, well, climate change is happening. We are undergoing a record drought that doesn't look like it's going to stop anytime soon. And for those who think that, you know, look at Nevada, look at California, look at states where it's gotten to a point where, you know, people's drinking water is cut off. We have to deal with the ramifications, not just water conservation, but wildfire. You know, the threat of wildfire in Travis County is huge. I live up in Steiner Ranch right now. If a wildfire hits, we get wiped out completely. And that will blow, you know, I spoke with firefighters. It was a perfect storm that prevented that from blowing down into Terry Town within a couple of hours. The last night, we had the fire up there. We need, you know, and we funded, I think it's like a one point some million dollar new wildfire unit in the fire department. That's not enough. If you and I were buying fire protection insurance or taking fire prevention measures, we could make sure that we could cover a lot more than what's going to be covered by the control burn unit that exists now. We need to properly fund that. We need to work on water conservation measures. And lastly, I want to talk about poverty and the environmental movement. I appreciate the Sierra Club, because in their questionnaire, they brought this question up. But we really have to work on environmental issues east of 35, work on the aquifer issues out there. You know, there was a semiconductor research fab that was out there that's shut down now. There are terrible environmental consequences out there as well, and we don't hear very much about that. And I think we really need to work to spread the environmental message and the issues that are raised as being important across the spectrum, both geographically and in terms of the level of income that we make. Two minutes? More?
Nope. Wait.
Thanks, Roy.
Okay. And Bridget?
You're right, Roy. Thank you all for coming here, especially when it's not a particularly pleasant evening. And these forums really are a tremendously valuable way to educate candidates on the issues. I want to bring my 25 years of experience and leadership on environmental issues to the Commissioners' Court. I do think we need a champion for the environment on that court. I want to continue the work that I've done to bring a variety of communities together around seeking solutions on difficult problems for our community. I usually have a show and tell with my flyer, with a picture of my kids on the back. I really feel that we have a duty to leave this place better than we found it, or at least leave it better for future generations. And we're not on that path. We're not on that path on affordability. Richard's right, there are very serious poverty issues here. And there are really serious affordability issues that are affecting the middle class and the lower middle class, and driving them down into poverty. I'm working on trying to fix our broken property tax appraisal issue, and that has huge implications across every economic spectrum. But I want to continue the work that I've done for the last year with a coalition of groups around Lake Travis, the statewide environmental leaders, and the eastern groundwater interests, to bring us all together and come up with a single recommendation to the LCRA about the allocation of surface water. Because we can do everything in our power to conserve water in Austin and central Texas, but if they continue the enormous releases of water downstream for a marshland crop, we won't have enough. So, that has to be revisited. It's a difficult issue, but it's a unique coalition. Gary's boss did help build the coalition around the lakes. This is the lakes, the eastern groundwater, and the statewide environmental leaders. And we're very close to having a unified recommendation. Thank you very much.
Okay. Well, thank you, county commissioner candidates, Richard Judge. It didn't even say it one time at normal speed. But thank you all for participating. We're going to do a quick set change for the county judge candidates, and also bring a couple extra cables in here for our audio, so we can get a little technical issue fixed. So, we'll take a couple minutes break, and we'll be right back with the county judge candidates. Thank you.